All right. According to my clock, it is four o'clock. So I don't yet see the town manager.
Oops, I didn't get one thing.
So I think I'll wait a couple of minutes for him to get on. There he is. All right. So let me call this June 29th meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is the approval of town accountant's warrants. Could I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the town manager update. Mr. Town Manager. Who is muted?
It's always somebody every meeting. So a few brief updates. I think one of the big things that we can report is White Pond is now open. And our summer, our summer program offerings are also open. Both of those, both the passes for White Ponds and the summer programs are fully subscribed. In the case of White Pond, that's 518 season passes with over 1,650 people. So obviously, people were really excited to get back out to White Pond. And the summer camps, like I said, it's a credit to Kate Hodges and Ryan Kane and the team at the Rec Department to get those up and going when a lot of communities around us really weren't able to offer summer programs and meet the guidelines, which are challenging. I don't know, Kate, if you have anything more you want to offer on that?
I'm muted. Just Ryan Kane and his team from Recreation and Ryan Orr from Facilities have been instrumental in getting that up. So taking any credit for that, they're wonderful.
Yeah, I don't have a list of communities that have not opened summer camps, but I know there's a lot. And so it was, like I said, it was Herculean effort. But we heard from the community these were a priority, and we were able to get that done. Another important note for everyone is there are mandatory watering restrictions in place by, through the Public Works Commission. And what that basically means is you're allowed to water one day. And I think it's an inch of water over an hour of watering. But it's, the intent is you do it on the same day as your solid waste recycling, curbside collection. So if your trash gets picked up on Wednesday, you can water on Wednesday for a certain amount of time. And even though we have gotten a good amount of rain in the last, you know, day and a half to two days, the drought is still an ongoing issue and it really remains a concern. And I think we're monitoring those conditions. And when we can ease those restrictions and go back to voluntary, we will. But for now, it is mandatory. Another program that got started early here in Concord was the curbside circulation. And I think I reported this last week, but if not, in two weeks, we've checked out almost 2,000 items and have checked back in 4,500. So obviously, people were using the library robustly before the pandemic hit. So we had a lot of, a lot of collection that was out there in the community. So that continues to be a very robust program. And we're thrilled that the community has embraced it and is maximizing the use of it. So another thing that we're doing is last week at the state, or a couple of weeks ago, the state launched a shared spaces grant program. I think I did report on that. We did submit a grant last Friday. And I think we're supposed to hear this Friday. We applied for $250,000 to modify certain open spaces and create opportunities for outdoor dining and arts and things like that. So hopefully, we'll get good news on that by the end of the week. We are also, DPLM is also managing the process of hiring a, or we have a consultant on board managing the process for evaluating the creation of business improvement districts or bids. And if you're not familiar with that, it's basically, you carve out an area on a map, and the businesses and really property owners in that area can be a part of basically almost like a homeowners association, but in a more positive way. And they can create opportunities for themselves for marketing or special events or branding and things like that. And so I think because we have three wonderful but distinct business districts, there's really a great opportunity for this. So that effort's going to be ongoing as well. And then another positive sign. I don't know what it means in the grand scheme of things, but I think it's a positive sign that building permit applications are actually up for the, over the, where last year. I think there was some pent-up demand. So the building department is extremely busy. But there are, there is guidance from the state for construction that really needs to be followed. And so if, if there's an inspection scheduled and the people working at the site aren't following that guidance, then we will issue a stop work order. So it's really important for people who have contractors working at their homes to make sure that those contractors are doing what they need to do to follow the governor's guidance and try and help continue just to work to stop the community spread of COVID-19. And then similarly, kind of another sort of relative return to normalcy are, you know, the healthcare system in terms of what services were offered, who was getting those services, really have changed significantly during the height of the pandemic, and that includes our EMS. But we're, the chief has reported that EMS calls are kind of returning to pre-COVID-19, both types and number. And like I said, I don't know what it means in the grand scheme of things either. But I think any kind of sign that things are normalizing is a positive one. And, you know, so I think that as a community, things are starting to come back together. And, you know, we are, we are seeing people out. You know, unfortunately, businesses are reopening during summer vacation season. So if you are here in town, it's going to be important to shop locally. There's, later in the agenda, we'll be talking about the Economic Vitality Committee. But Concord Together is launching a program called Summer Solstice in Concord. And it's basically a program to get people out shopping in each district. And you can, I think Concord Together has a website. I think you probably get it from our tourism website as well. But that's a great private partnership. They have a grant program as well. And we're working every single day to support their work as well as other initiatives we have going on around that I've reported on the past. So I think that's it for me. Any questions?
Stephen, how's the, how's the applications for outside dining coming along? Are you still receiving a number?
We haven't received any new ones since the last one we approved. So I don't know if people are maybe more focused on indoor dining now. You know, right as we, right as we figured out how to do outdoor dining really easy, they allowed indoor dining. But I haven't received anything. So if businesses are, if anybody's listening and they want to get one in, we could turn them around in a day.
How many do you have?
That was my question.
What's that?
How many do you have? We both have the same question.
Yeah, I think we got a, you would ask me that. I think, I think we have maybe a half a dozen that we reviewed and approved. I'd have to go back and double check the numbers, but I think it was between four and six.
But that doesn't mean there's only four to six outdoor dining restaurants, right? These are over and above restaurants that were already approved. Is that right?
I think that's a total number. Some restaurants have outdoor dining as a part of their site planning, like their original site planning approval. So they would not need extra, you know, extra permission, so to speak. These are just the ones that have come in. But I do know, I do know there are restaurants who have reopened for indoor dining, who did not seek permission for outdoor dining. So, you know, it wasn't going to work for every establishment. And like I said, the indoor dining things, you can just reopen. There's no additional inspection or application or anything. You can just reopen as long as you're fulfilling the governor's orders. And all we've, we've sort of put out a soft request of if you do develop, well, you're mandated to have a COVID-19 response plan. We have asked that if you wouldn't mind, send it to us to our Board of Health. So they have it on file, but it's not a requirement. That's up to the individual businesses to really be responsible for their own kind of self-policing on that. But having them on file gives us a head start when it comes to following up on a complaint if we get one.
Jane, did you have a question?
I just wanted to reiterate on the, on the watering ban. And that many, many homes in Concord have their own wells, but we all live on one aquifer. So even if you don't have town water, I would hope that as a member of Concord, or resident of Concord, you, you think about the watershed as a whole.
Yeah, I think there's, I think that the order, but the guidance, if you go on our website and go through the, we put out a news and notes, news and notices about this. If you, either that or go to CPW's website, kind of follow the links. There is guidance on, on well watering as well. Also, you may want to be advised on.
All right. Any other questions for the town manager? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda, Chair's remarks. I have just a quick number. We're planning an executive session Wednesday at four o'clock to discuss the ongoing Estebrook litigation. We are just about finished with the final edits of the agreement between the town and the library. And I want to thank the folks from the library and Stephen for working so hard to get that done. As you know, that will come before the Select Board as a public hearing. And I'm anticipating trying to have it on July 13th. I have not yet got confirmation from folks at the library, but as soon as I do, I'll let you know for sure. And then third, as part of our planning for the abbreviated town meeting, you'll recall that there will be a meeting of myself and Linda and the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, along with the town moderator, to review all of the warrants, all of the articles on the warrant. And to take, to review input we've received from various committees about the degree to which they believe their article is essential. And we sought the same information from citizens who had petitions. So tonight, later in our agenda, the Select Board will be reviewing those articles that we were sponsoring on the town warrant. And once the Select Board has made a judgment about its articles, I will then compile a list that is made up of those articles, the proposed consent calendar that the town moderator has prepared, and disposition remarks from various committees about their articles into a single document. And then I'm proposing that, that the group I have mentioned, Linda, myself, the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee and the moderator will meet on July 7th, Tuesday, at 9:00 a.m. And the purpose of that meeting is just to go over this with a relatively small group of folks, not to make any decisions, but to try to get it organized. And once we have completed that, then there will be a full meeting of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. And as soon as we've had this meeting on July 7th, and we know the status of our work, I will propose when that meeting will be scheduled. But hopefully, fairly soon after the planning meeting. A little twist to what we had proposed before, and that as you might recall, postponing indefinitely certain articles. It turns out that if an article is postponed or if a motion is not made on a particular article, that that is equivalent to a no vote. And so that has particular importance for planning board articles because it also turns out that if a planning board zoning article, excuse me, is turned down at town meeting, either by a vote or by a motion to postpone or by not moving the article, it cannot be brought back to town meeting for two years. So the moderator has been in consultation with counsel. And it turns out that there is a provision that allows articles to be recalled. And so after we've done the planning that I just talked about before, if there is a planning board zoning article that, together with the planning board, the Select Board and the Finance Committee, we believe is not necessary to be moved at this postponed annual town meeting, then there will be an article to recall it. So that when we do have our special town meeting sometime later this year or early next year, we'll be able to revisit that zoning article. And the last thing is, as you will recall, every September for the last few years, usually the first Saturday or second Saturday, we have Ag Day. And I, in consultation with Jane and the Ag Committee, we invited the Ag Committee to join us at our meeting next Monday to talk about whether or not we can have the Ag Day, whether or not it should be abbreviated or how we should go forward with it. But I thought before making any kind of a decision about that, we should hear from the Ag Committee. So that will be on our agenda for our meeting next Monday. And that's all I have. Unless there are questions. All right, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Grant of location application by Comcast for the underground installation of coaxial cable at 52 Main Street. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing on the grant of location application by Comcast for the underground installation of coaxial cable at 52 Main Street.
Is there a second? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that the motion passes unanimously. Who is here from Comcast to talk to us about this? I don't see anybody unmuting their, their screen.
Justin Richardson from our Public Works Department is here. Justin, can you touch on this?
Yes, I wrote the letter as far as the, for the requirements for it, the grant of location. It's basically just a connection from Bank of America to a Comcast Duck Bank for coaxial cable.
And you provided, not only the letter in the packet, there is also a map of where it would go. It was essentially just back down the street to the box at Kaiser Road, essentially, correct, Justin?
Correct.
Okay. And is the town fully supportive of this?
Public Works is.
Good. And Stephen, you are too?
Yes.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would care to speak to this matter? If you would, just unmute yourself, and hopefully, I will see you do that. I don't see anybody unmuting. So I will believe there are no public comments, and I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mike, did you want to get comments from the board?
After we close the public hearing.
Okay. Move to close the public hearing on the grant of location application by Comcast for the underground installation of coaxial cable at 52 Main Street.
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Comments from the Select Board?
I have a question. It might be in the material. I just don't remember right now. Is, how long will this project take? And will it need police detail? How is all that going to work out?
That's going to be, so one of the conditions is for them to submit basically a traffic safety or traffic management plan that we will review as part of our, our right-of-way permit. So we won't issue that until we're satisfied with the details and all the stuff that's required. As far as closing, there's also going to be a closing of a sidewalk temporarily. So we'll have to deal with that as well.
And that's part of the conditions laid out in your memorandum, correct?
Exactly, yes.
So the police chief will also review the traffic safety and detail specs?
Yes, the, I think the public safety officer will.
Okay.
Are any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the grant of location application by Comcast for the underground installation of coaxial cable at 52 Main Street with conditions as detailed in the memo from the town engineer, Steve Dorcor, dated June 16th, 2020.
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is changes to the Duroy project in scope. I suspect that's Kate Hodges. There she is.
That's right. How are you? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So I suppose "changes" is a somewhat misleading title because really what this is is sort of a reversion back to the original plans that we had about a year and a half ago now. You're going to share my screen so I can, so probably remember this, the artistic rendition here. So essentially, what we've done since the last time that I came and gave the update is had the beginning of the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and, I'm sorry, the Natural Resources folks. And also a much larger staff review, which included many conversations with the Public Health Director. And so from there, we came out with a couple of different, I guess, things that we weren't necessarily banking on. The NRC is what I will start with. So there were some general thoughts that this path, can you see, is my pointer, can you see my mouse going down here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So this is within the 50-foot buffer zone, which, as folks know, NRC opines on things, anything within the 100-foot. And so when we went the first, the first time, we had this pathway here, it was a bit closer down to the water. And then it sort of came back up here. There's a natural sort of ledge here. This is very wooded. And then it kind of dips back down here a bit to give the user some ability to be able to use this area if they were looking to put a kayak or a canoe in the water. And so these areas were of particularly high interest for that group. And they wanted to do a site visit, which is totally reasonable. And so we ended up conducting that last week. And I think it was really helpful because you, they were able to go out and kind of see, we marked the trail effectively on, put stakes in what would be the exact center line, and then flagged the trees that were over six inches in diameter on either side so that you could see the trees that were attempting to save and others that will need to go. And I think that that was helpful. Here, we didn't have a lot of tree removal. This actually ended up, if you can picture it, the Duroy home was right about here. And so this is sort of a soft landing. For those who've been out there, the Duroy home was here. It was flat. It went down quite a bit and then became kind of flat again. And then this is where it goes down on the water's edge. And right now, it's heavily vegetated here because it's, you know, we're in the summer season. But here is sort of a natural low that existed over time. When we went there to look at it, when we were first looking into purchasing, they had a nice fire pit area with some chairs, et cetera. So clearly, it was used, you know, sort of as an overlook. And that's what we were trying to explain to NRC is that, you know, people are naturally going to want to use at least this half of the park to really look, observe, and view the pond. And so this little dip down into, and it's, we're about seven feet within the 50-foot buffer zone, we think is necessary because it leads to the water feature. And our fear was that if we put it too far, if we just abandoned this path altogether and you have just say this path that's right here, I think we're going to find that there's a lot of people that are just going to traverse their way down here and basically erode what is this bank. And what we want to do is have people really be using this as an overlook and leaving this area as its natural vegetation. So I think there was an understanding of that. They're going to reconvene the hearing later in the month of July, and we'll hear what they have to say. They obviously can't, you know, deliberate there. But I think that there was a general understanding. And, you know, I think it was, it was better to see it for them to walk it, for them to see, here's what we're trying to do. But in that, we also talked about the soil samples. So the soil samples were taken quite some time ago. And I can stop sharing. And the soil samples basically told us, sorry, I'm having some, ah, that we had a predominantly sandy soil mix, which it wasn't really too much of a surprise other than we thought that there weren't going to be as many sandy soils as you got further into the woodland areas. And as it turns out, just doing some simple history, there was a gravel pit there some number of years ago. And I think that just over time, when the Duros were investigating whether they could subdivide it, they brought in some fill and kind of made a natural road. And so that's sort of the road that we're trying to follow. The idea of the event barn was kind of one that we were listening to, the things that people were saying, you know, at the time, prior to COVID, when people were saying the need for, you know, a nature camp. And there's one that is very successful, Tom Denny, that's over in Bolton and sort of mirroring something like that with the ability to have sort of more integration between the Boy Scout island that's there in the middle. And so we tried to do that with the event barn. But what was happening is that, number one, it was becoming very costly. And number two, it was going to be very difficult for us to be able to just start out of the gate, given the financial situation that COVID has had on recreation. And recreation was slated to pay for that. They were going to contribute $200,000 from their fund balance, which before COVID was over $1 million. And so as I outlined in the memo, it was sort of going to be an investment in kind of expanding their operation. And, and right now, we're not in a position to do that and likely will not be in a position to do that for a number of years. And so we're kind of reverting back to the pavilion shelter type that's open air. But we'd like to keep the post and beam idea because it's kind of woodsy. And, and so it'd come in a kit type of situation. And so that's, that's sort of where that has come. Now, the idea that you could build onto a pavilion or maybe close it in so you have, you know, maybe three walls or just walls on both sides, those are still very open. It would be interesting to see how, once the park is open and being used, how it's being used and whether people still feel very passionately like that's something that they want to do or whether an open-air pavilion really, you know, suits the purposes just fine. The only thing that we see is winter programming would be difficult. And there was a desire to do some ice skating or something like that if we don't have a shelter in place. But with these type of pavilions, we might be able to make makeshift shelters with artificial or temporary walls that can be tacked up and then taken down. Certainly, it wouldn't be as warm as a house or anything like that, but it would be better than just the open air. So that's something that we can consider. And the last change was that of the composting toilets. And I have to say, it was a bit disappointing for me. I probably was the last one to get on board with this particular idea because, well, for lack of a better term, I was excited about the idea of composting toilets in a public facility. I thought that that was going to be really, really neat. But what has happened is that with the creation of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail 2B and the idea generated behind how much use that is going to get, because the park is immediately adjacent to that, the Public Health Division has taken the position that we need to develop a graywater septic. So if graywater is simply hand washing, but at at least 60, if not 75% capacity. And so we weren't anticipating that way back in the day when we had the first staff review. We thought that we would have a composting toilet system with a small hand washing sink, a graywater system that would just go underground a couple of gallons and then leach out. And so that was going to be how it was fully integrated. And I can tell you that the back and forth And I can tell you, um, that, that, the back and forth between the health department and the engineers, um, has been going on for a number of months. And, um, this is the conclusion that, that the public health director has come to. This is how, um, they're interpreting the code. And I, I, you know, I'm inclined to, to agree with that. We have no reason. I'm not a public health director. Um, and so despite the fact that, you know, there might be differences of opinion, I'm, I'm gonna be, you know, respectful and, and advocate for what they're saying. And so basically what they were saying, um, is effectively you're going to have to build seventy-five percent of a septic and at a cost at seventy-five percent of what a septic would be, which a typical septic of this size is about fifty to sixty thousand dollars, so about seventy-five percent of that. If in fact we wanted to still have the composting toilets, it's completely fine, but we then have to build that at a hundred percent. And so you were taking a project that was perhaps going to be around sixty thousand dollars and more than doubling that. And it just seemed, you know, in keeping with the spirit of the project, that I wasn't sure that too many people would want to pay, you know, more than a hundred times what it's worth just to have composting toilets. And it could be that we might be able to have them either at, you know, another park or White Pond or something like that. But it, it didn't seem financially feasible. And the other thing, which I tried to put in my memo, and I have to say, I, I had to rewrite that paragraph several times. But the thought is, is that the usage of this park is for people who are, you know, coming to spend a couple of hours or bicycling through and might need to use the restroom. And therefore there wouldn't be enough solids to be able to, um, be able to really inhibit the, the composting portion of it. And so if and when we got to a, a point where it was mostly liquid that was being deposited into the system, we would have to then hire a company, um, or someone to come out to add solids in order to initiate the composting. And so that became, uh, when we started to look at that, uh, fairly costly because it, it, of course, is, um, one of those jobs, uh, that I think has some specialized field. And, and so, um, you know, we had to be cognizant of that. So all things considered, it, it seemed like what was a good idea, um, and still is frankly, was just gonna be very, very expensive, and we were trying to be responsible with, with the public funds, um, for that. Um, I know that Terry, you had, um, some questions that were not real, not necessarily things that were on my, um, memo, but I don't know if you want me to touch on any of that or just wait. I think, I, I, my impression was I was just supposed to be here giving an update, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I know that there's been a lot of, um, back and forth from other members of the community regarding the project. And so, you know, I'm, I'm here to take direction from, you know, from Stephen and, and from you all. And, um, and I'm just, we're just trying to propose things that are in line with what people want, but not, you know, outrageously expensive. Um, but if the will of the community is build out the seventy-five septic system and have the composting toilets, we, we will happily do that, um, just presenting what I think is the highest and best use of the funds that we have without incurring additional expense.
Right. Thank you. So the summary of the changes that you're, uh, brought to our attention are the trail, which we won't know more about until we've heard from NRC, the pavilion, and then toilets.
That is correct. Yes.
So are there comments from the board or questions? Jane?
Um, I had questions about, first of all, I, um, I know that the design that was, um, on display at the town and throughout, um, was the result also of a fairly extensive public process. Um, and that these are obviously changes that are based on circumstances that none of us could have anticipated at the time of that process. Has the access to the water or any of the longer-term, not this phase, but longer-term phase, um, uses of ju- the Jero property, has that been fundamentally changed?
So the, um, the initial, uh, plan, and I'm, I'm gonna see, if you can give me one second and I can just look up. Sorry, my, wanna try to get one of the initial plans. Maybe. So this is not the, um, let me just share my screening. And this is obviously, uh, not as pretty as the other one, but I think could be helpful. This plan, although I'm gonna rotate it. Okay, so you are essentially looking at, this would be the driveway coming into the park. The initial plan, um, actually called for a, uh, a kind of a canoe and kayak launch here that was sort of built out. So there would be an area that you can walk down and do a, a kayak launch from the ground. But it was built out with a ADA accessible launch that was here, and that's about probably ten feet into the pond. And then it had a boardwalk that ran along the water's edge. And then it, this part came out about four and a half to five feet, um, in the, in the rainy season, and then had a fishing pier here with a set of steps. Uh, when we did the initial review, um, the staff site plan review, we were told in no uncertain circumstances that that would never be permitted and never be allowed. Um, that, that while the NRC is often, um, okay with building with inside the twenty-five, um, if there's sort of a fishing thing and, you know, a canoe and kayak, which is what we did, they would never, um, be supportive in, in their estimation of a, uh, overwater boardwalk or a fishing pier and things that have pylons and dewatering that, that need to go into it. So that was abandoned, um, kind of early on. And we did talk about that, um, a bit. And what we were hearing from people wasn't that they were so much interested in the fishing, but the canoeing and the kayaking, and how in fact could they do that and get there? And so, um, let me just share it one more here. So this is the new, um, it's hard just because when I bring up my screen, you all get big and you go right in front of it. So, so this is, um, this right now is our access to the water path. This is a platform that we could build, but it is not included in this, um, rendition, nor is it included in phase one or two. It would be a future phase. What we're at, as is this floating dock with the accessible boat launch. What we're basically doing is limbing up the trees, um, that are in this area, and then making a freestanding stone wall here to try to catch some of the runoff that comes down. And then basically taking the, the dead and decaying trees that we would be taking down, chipping them in place and using that, um, as a way to kind of have, so you come down. This is an accessible walkway. This is paved, accessible walkway to, um, exposed aggregate with some area here that you can keep your canoe or kayak. Maybe we have some, you know, picnic tables or something. And you would essentially be able to drag it down in this green area here where we remove all of the invasives, and you are be able to get to the water there. But we would keep everything on this side and this side in its natural habitat. So that's sort of how we were able to come to an understanding where, okay, there's how you can get to the water, but it isn't going to be this boardwalk, you know, anything like that. And frankly, um, when we costed that out, the boardwalk was actually almost a million dollars. So, um, the beach and, and swimming, which, um, Jane, I know was a big, a big thing that people were interested in early on. Conveniently, ESS had been hired because they were doing the, um, the dredging system with NRC at the time anyway. And so we asked them to just include an additional scope for a few thousand dollars to tell us what we would need to do to be able to accomplish swimming in, say, you know, a twenty-five by fifty-foot area kind of thing. So a very, very small area, probably a, a third of the size of what is at White Pond. And, um, it wasn't so much, although we would need to, to dredge that area a, a little bit more robustly than, than we wanted to. The, the issue was the access, because if we're going to have it as a public bathing area, it needs to be accessible. And so it would have required much more removal of trees and limbs, and we would have had to start paving well within the twenty-five-foot buffer. And, um, that was thought to be, you know, something that NRC probably wouldn't be super appreciative of if there was another avenue, which became apparent to us, um, when we were told we were getting the gift of White Pond. Uh, not to mention that it was, it was about two and a half million dollars to be able to accomplish just the beach area. And that included, um, the additional dredging. Um, so not, you know, if you add in the dredging that's already happening, it's, it's well over two and a half, but it would include, um, additional dredging and then bringing in sand and fill, dewatering up to a point, and then creating, um, those accessible pathways within the twenty-five foot. And so, um, that was abandoned, uh, as well, for now. Um, now, we're getting mixed reviews. I think people are still interested in that. Um, and I think once Warner's Pond is dredged in the first initial areas, that might be something worth revisiting. But I, I guess I would wanna be very honest with everybody about how much we think it's gonna cost and whether people feel like the rate of return on that is a, is a good investment for them.
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions, Terry?
Uh, yes, I sent some, uh, questions over the weekend to Kate about the finances of it. And I really have not had time, um, I, uh, spent time this weekend putting it together and sent it to me too. And I apologize, I haven't had time to really look through it. But, um, I did wanna thank you, Kate, for doing that, and thank your whole team for all your, um, dedication on this. You've obviously done tremendous amount of work on this, and such a beautiful property. And the photos of the pavilion are beautiful. So I'm very excited to have this property and look at the plans. And on the other hand, we are getting as a board some correspondence from the public that, so I think making some really good points about maybe pausing the project. Because as you pointed out, Kate, with COVID, things have changed, not only financially with the Recreation Revolving Fund, but also the public's input might be different now. And we don't know. And I think the middle school being on pause is kind of a good example of, maybe we should think about having a pause here and not go out to bid in August. And I just throw that out for discussion. I'm really not sure what I think. Like I said, I haven't even looked through all the numbers yet either, um, but I throw that out for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I just, um, kind of, uh, put in the, just tell you all the numbers that I had given to Terry? Um, just, just so you know sort of what we're talking about?
Sure.
Um, so, uh, one of the reasons that we were thinking it might be advantageous, um, is because, uh, like, I think I presented on White Pond a few months back, we're finding that, um, the capital projects that are being bid out around now, um, are actually coming in well below what the estimates are. And, um, I'm not sure if that'll continue for, you know, months, years. I, I'm not sure. Um, and so, uh, I guess we're not pushing one way or the other. It's, it's whatever the, the board and the, and the town is, um, is comfortable with. But know that, um, you know, just like with any other project, uh, the, the more time we put in between when these are finalized and, and when we go out to bid, um, the more costs that we incur. Number one for, you know, carrying the firms that are helping us, but number two, because some of these permits will expire. So that's one thing. Um, phase one, um, consists of, uh, demo mobilization, site prep, and grading, uh, the asphalt benches, uh, gate, then loam, topsoil, a sand burrow, beams, mason wall. So basically making it a park and making some of that park accessible. The stormwater management, and then the, uh, bare minimum necessary for electric, uh, emergency lighting, and a, and a small inch water line running to the, to the bathroom. That's phase one, and that, um, with a ten percent construction contingency is about one point three seven five million. Um, and so we have, um, allocated one point two million available in park projects from last fiscal year and two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, from this current fiscal year, and two hundred thousand from CPC. So we have one four, um, we're estimating this at one point three seven five. So we have enough to get that done. Phase two A, um, is the grading and soils and planting, the slab and foundation in the restroom facility. And that's specific to the five hundred thousand dollars that we asked CPC, um, to award us this next fiscal year. So regardless of, um, sort of what, what happens, pausing or not, phase one doesn't include any what we're calling vertical construction. It, it's to make it a park. It's to get, you know, the repointed driveway. And I think it also is important that if that's going to pause, that we make sure that we communicate that with the housing folks because they've gone ahead and been able to use some of our wetland flagging and some of, some of our site delineation to be able to start the process of, um, renovating and, and building their unit. And so they aren't gonna be able to do that if we don't repoint our driveway because our driveway runs right through where the house is. Um, so I think there's just, we just need to have some more communication, and it's, it's completely up to you all how you wanna handle that.
Um, just a, just a couple of quick follow-ups if I might then. So that last thing you said, the driveway that's necessary for the housing, did you say that's part of phase two A or part of phase one?
That's part of phase one. Yep, getting into the property. Absolutely.
And the other thing is, I think I heard you say that for phase one, you're going to need one point three seven million, and you have it already appropriated in, uh, from a previous town meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the way that that, um, shook out is that we were going to, uh, pre-COVID and with a lot of ambition, we were gonna run this project. Um, we were thinking by this time we would be at phase two. So we thought we would have phase two of Jero going and phase one of White Pond just starting. And so while we're, and, and that didn't happen, we ended up stopping White Pond. Um, number one, because we didn't even know what the season was going to look like. We didn't know, you know, what we were gonna be dealing with. So we, we stopped. We're at the, um, sort of still at the master planning phase, and we've kind of slowed that down a bit. And, and so what we would do is we would propose that the money that we put in for capital for next fiscal year be used exclusively for White Pond. So we wouldn't be asking necessarily for any money from the capital plan for Jero. This, the money that we have already, plus the five hundred from CPC would satisfy phase one and two A.
Okay, I got a little bit lost in that, but I, I think I have a pretty simple question, really.
I put it out in the memo, so it might be easier to look at it, but I, I put them all out by date.
All of that is laid out in the memo, yeah.
Okay, just a very simple question. So what you wanna bid in August, is that the one point three seven million for phase one?
That's our pro, that's our projected amount, yes. The bathroom and pavilion is a different, is a different bid because theoretically it would be a different vendor. So vertical construction and horizontal, horizontal construction are two different processes. And I would think that we would probably get someone, uh, some contractor that would wanna build, uh, bid, rather, on the creating a park, loam, seed, and that, that wouldn't be the same skillset as someone to build a restroom and pavilion.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what you wanna bid August first. You wanna put out several bids or one bid?
No, we, we wanna put out, well, it, it, first of all, we're not gonna meet the August first deadline because we don't go back to NRC until the end of July. So I think more realistically, we're talking September. So I think in September, we would look for the earthwork, the, the, the one point three seven five. And that's at estimates pre-COVID, so I don't know what it would be now. Um, and then probably around October or November to do a second bid for the vertical construction. And that would start in the following spring. So that would be, we'd have, you know, the contract in hand, ready to go as soon as the snow melts. And that amount is about five hundred thousand dollars, give or take?
Susan, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, it's a broader financial one, but it, it, I probably should bring it up later on in the discussion.
All right. Um, does the board have any additional questions for Kate?
So one of the other concerns, Kate, um, as you know, is, um, giving the, the town residents a little more visibility on where we are now. Um, is there any reason you couldn't fit in another public presentation? I know you've done so many.
No, actually, um, Ryan Orr and Ryan Kane and I were, were talking about that, and we discussed that with Stephen. Um, at, right now, um, these next couple of weeks, we're, we're a bit swamped with, um, with camp and, and whatnot. But, um, we're hoping, uh, I'm, I have a vacation coming up in a couple of weeks. And then, um, coming back towards the end of the month, we'd like to do a, a Zoom presentation and really just kind of a community forum and, and try to have a conversation similar. and really just kind of a community forum and, and try to have a conversation similar to, to this. Um, probably more artistic drawings and try to figure out, you know, uh, if we're barking up the right tree kind of thing. So yes, we, we are planning on that. Um, if there's nothing else, just to hopefully to get people, uh, re-engaged.
Great. Um, towards the end of July after NRC? I mean, that's
Yes. Yes. We'd like to get NRC's okay, just because if we don't, the, the plan will change again.
Sure. I, 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 I think that sounds terrific because obviously, um, there are some concerns about that. That would be wonderful.
Yeah. Susan?
I'm sorry. I do have another question. Um, I'm trying to get the timing of all of this straight in my head. And, and what I remember is that the Jarrow project was initiated prior to the acquisition of White Pond. And, or prior to us being informed that that was a gift and that we would have to make some capital investment with that. But I, I wondered about the swimming part. If once we acquired White Pond, did it make sense to even to pursue that?
So that was exactly the conversation that happened. So, um, we were in negotiations, um, myself and, and, um, planning and land management with, with the Jarrow family for approximately five months. Um, when we came to, uh, what we thought was a good arrangement, we had to wait for town meeting. And it was in those months between the public hearings where we were talking about, this is going to be a Warren article. It was 2.5 from capital and 500,000 from CPC to purchase the property and then do our due diligence. We purchased it for 2.7 and then used the rest for everything else. It was in between that time that then the White Pond associates had approached the former town manager, Chris Wayland, and said, here's something that we're interested in doing. And a lot of that was kind of coming from the fact that, you know, the stormwater management there was becoming a bit of a nightmare and they knew something had to be done. But all of that was about somewhere between six and seven months after we were already engaged with Jarrow. So I, I recognize that it seems like we were all gung ho, uh, to swim there and, and we were until we figured out, well, if just a few miles up the road, you, you could do it at less expense than what it would cost to, to swim here.
Matt, I think I saw your hand. And you're muted.
There we go. I just wanted to note that, uh, the West Concord Advisory Committee has this on their agenda for Wednesday. Um, and certainly, you know, they have a, a pretty strong, uh, interest in things that are going on in this area. Um, so, and that secondly, it sounds like we have time, uh, to get further public input. And so it certainly makes sense, I think, with everything that's gone on, uh, to take a, another look. And, uh, you know, especially with all the program changes on the one side and then all of the other, uh, town initiatives that have changed. Uh, so, um, I just would say, let's, you know, live, give this a little bit more time before giving a, a read on it.
Stephen, did I see your hand too?
Yeah, I just, I, I, um, you know, we have got a lot of feedback on it. I mean, it's, the, the feedback has been, you know, been coming on this project since before COVID-19. Um, and so it's people have, you know, had concerns and we take those concerns very seriously. I think, you know, the, the middle school, um, building, the middle school project, um, did vote to pause. And I think that that was a good choice. I, I just, um, there are aspects to that, um, decision-making and discussion that I do think are, uh, are, you know, correlatable to this, but from a financial standpoint, most of this money for this phase that we're talking about has already been appropriated. Um, and it has really no impact on the FY21 budget because it was a part of the debt capital package. And so it's, it's a little, it's, from a financial standpoint, it's, it's, well, I guess it's more than a little different than a, than a 90 to $100 million middle school, um, that would be present. The next step for which was completion of feasibility study and then presentation to town meeting and voters for a potential debt exclusion. Now, I mean, we paused and I'm, as you know, I'm on that committee and we paused because the next step is going to be, was going to be a pretty significant ask. From a financial standpoint, that ask was already made of town meeting and it was approved. And so I just want to kind of distinguish the, um, fiscal reasons that were in parts, part of this middle school building committee's decision-making versus the reasons for, um, you know, getting some additional public feedback and, you know, maybe, you know, making sure that folks are aware of the project and the benefits of it and how it evolved to the place we're in today. So I, I just, I, I, like I said, I think there are aspects that are comparable, but others that are not. And I just wanted to kind of highlight the ones that are different for Jarrow.
But I do wonder if there might be further program changes. For example, if the pavilion is not going to be there, do we need as much parking? You know, and so these decisions kind of interconnect and, and I wonder if really the final shoe has dropped yet. Um, and that maybe just a little bit more scrutiny would, uh, kind of get that scope defined.
So the pavilion is not going anywhere. It's staying. And we did a parking study based on a, a build out, um, of what we needed. And it actually called for more than what we had and the community didn't want to see that much, um, of the wood line getting cut. So we reduced it. But it actually called for 67 spaces initially, and that was without a programming building. So we've reduced that drastically, but we've done all the homework on that. The only other thing I wanted to bring up to sort of mirror what Stephen was saying is that I, I recognize I was, um, lucky enough to be forwarded some of the, um, thing, some of the comments from the, the League of Women Voters in particular, um, who I had, you know, written to and, and given, um, information that they asked for. But we're receiving an equal, if not more, amount of correspondence, um, and we, meaning more on the case of, um, Ryan Kane at, at Recreation, about people who are continuing to be quite frustrated that we purchased a piece of property that has don't, no trespassing signs on it that have been there for quite some time. Um, and so during the walkthrough, actually with NRC, um, there was probably upwards of 20 or so people coming in and out on their bikes, et cetera, um, just using the property. And so
Right. Is there actually a technical reason why no trespassing is needed there now, given that
Yeah, I mean, it's dangerous. It's dangerous there. There's like trash, there's trees that are, there's no, you know, there's no, we don't want to tell people, go ahead and take a, a, a walk in there. It's okay because it's, it's filled with invasives and poison ivy and there's trees that are delimed. There's, you know, people are leaving trash. There's, yeah, it's
It didn't seem that distinguishable to me from, I don't know, other, other woods in the area, I guess.
Are there any more comments? I, we have a lot to cover this evening. Uh, Kate, thank you very much. I think I, along with a number of citizens, will look forward to that additional public hearing that you're going to schedule. I think that's, uh, I think that's a very wise thing to do and hopefully help us all understand a little bit better what, uh, what this will become.
Okay. I just need some clarification on whether, I mean, are we, is Mike, are my team and I, under Stephen, supposed to be lugging along, obviously doing the public hearing, but, um, or is that a discussion for another time?
I don't, uh, I don't see any reason for you not to continue to go ahead with what you called, uh, the horizontal part of what you're doing with money is already having been appropriated, uh, by town meeting and, uh, CPC and, as Stephen has indicated, that, uh, aren't having any impact on the fiscal budget. So I don't, does anybody else have any? Concern, Jerry?
Um, is that a concern? I, I suspect it's, it makes sense. And I'm, I'm thinking that as the Bruce from the rail trail, as we know, is going to be connecting uh, across the, um, across Route 2 this fall. It probably makes sense to be doing as much of this as possible.
We have the same design architects and contracts, so there's a bit of a savings with, with that. Um, and they've already actually staked out, uh, that phase. It's, it's actually, you can see it from the Jarrow land. So it's, it's pretty neat.
But there have been, and obviously a lot of changes have taken place since the beginning of this and we've kind of developed it as it goes along. And I suspect there'll be additional changes as we do it. And I think a continuing strong effort, Kate, by you and your team to keep the public informed will be helpful to all of us in understanding the kind of recreational facility that we're going to wind up having. So thank you very much. Appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you for your time.
The next item on our agenda is, uh, regional housing, uh, a budget adjustment and who is here to?
Well, I'm sure Carrie and I can probably handle. I know you got a memo in the packet from, from Carrie LaFleur. So Carrie, if you want to talk about
I can take that.
Great. Thank you.
On behalf of the Regional Housing Services Office, I'm here to request an adjustment in the fiscal '20, uh, budget appropriation. Under Article 8 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, the, an amount of $265,000 was budgeted for Regional Housing Service Offices Services. Under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, at any point during the fiscal year, um, a revolving fund budget can be adjusted with the approval of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. At this time, the Regional Housing Service Office is asking for an additional $20,000 for fiscal '20, bringing the budget to $285,000. And the reason being is that the office has contracted additional services for, for its member communities. And there has been an addition of, um, a couple of communities that are purchasing services from the Regional Housing Services Office. Um, all of the fees that are used to support their budget have actually been collected. So there is no, uh, no additional increase to the Town of Concord. Last Thursday, the Finance Committee took up this item and approved this request.
All right. Um, is there any, and I was at that Finance Committee meeting. Uh, is there any, uh, questions for the Chief Financial Officer? All right. Thank you. Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the RHSO FY '20 budget adjustment as presented.
I can.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Mr. Lawson.
Hi.
Myself, Linda Escobedo. Aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a fiscal 20-year end transfer. Mr. Fleur?
Thank you. As you will recall, the town's fiscal year budget is approved by town meeting in 39 distinct line item appropriations. Transfers are only then allowed by subsequent town meeting or through a process allowed under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 33B. The request before you this afternoon is to seek several line item transfers under this provision of Mass General Law where transfers are, are allowed between May 1st and July 15, with the approval of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. I did provide in your packet a memorandum detailing the, um, the four transfers, the three twos and the one from that are being sought this afternoon. The first is a, a transfer from line item two, or two line item two legal services in the amount of 291,000. To line item three, elections and registrars in the amount of 22,000. The third from line, to line item four, town meeting and reports in the amount of 20,000 totaling $333,000. Uh, the transfer from is from line item 26, the library, um, again, in the amount of $333,000. Uh, these, these deficits are, or estimated deficits are based on our estimates either of bills that have not yet been received or estimated costs that we expect to incur. Um, the, the major or the, the most notable here is legal services. And this represents an estimate of, um, the remaining months of May and June. There are two, two items here that are new elections and registrars, $22,000. As you know, we had a, a town election recently and we incurred costs over and above what we typically would see because of, um, pandemic protocols that were put in place. We had additional materials that we needed to, to provide. So that's the additional cost there. And then town meeting and reports, we're, we're setting aside an additional $20,000, um, assuming that we'll have additional costs associated either with printing or with just having town meeting with the additional protocols in place or both of those. Um, we have, we are fortunate to have funding available within the, within the budget. So this is a transfer. And the reason that we have such, such a large amount left over in the library is because the library, as you know, was closed for a period of approximately three months. And while no full-time staff were furloughed, um, lots of operational, there was savings in, in operational costs, including utilities and supplies. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Carrie, I just have one, uh, question, and that is I, I understand the, um, town meeting reports and it clearly will probably be spending some additional money to do that, but won't this money need to be expended by the end of June?
So we will, we will encumber this money in anticipation of these expenses. If expenses don't occur, then we will release, we will release the encumbrance and it will become part of free cash in fiscal '21.
Okay. Are there any, uh, questions from the board? I would notice Carrie did the Finance Committee approve these items at their meeting, uh,
Thank you. Thank you. I forgot to mention that.
So any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Um, move to approve an FY '20 year-end transfer of $333,000 from the library account to, for $291,000 to the legal services account, $22,000, um, to the election registrar account and 20,000, um, to the town meeting report account.
Our second, I want the clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo. Aye.
Thank you. And I note that it passed unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. The next item on our agenda is review of talent, excuse me, review of Economic Vitality Committee recommendations. Who's going to lead us through this?
I can get us started. Uh, and Susan, I don't, I don't know if you were at the meeting when the recommendations were made. I was not. I did get, uh, they were submitted to me from, um, Jennifer Shuneman, uh, who's the co-chair of that committee. And, um, if you bear with me, I can just run through them quick. Or if there's someone from the Economic Vitality Committee, uh, who wa, would rather be recognized, um, I'm happy to yield the floor as well. Um,
Is there someone here from the committee? I don't see.
So, yeah, I don't see anybody raising their hand. So, um, so very quickly, um, they, they, um, voted to, like I said, I was not present at the meeting, but they did vote to, to, um, communicate that this, you know, under their charge, they, they make recommendations to the Select Board um, for the purposes of stimulating economic vitality in, in the Town of Concord. So EVC, and I'm, I'm reading here from Jennifer's message, "The EVC unanimously recommended to waive the relevant signage guidelines, including would not limit to HTC, to allow greater flexibility to the shops and restaurants to fly flags or use other signage to communicate that they are open. Uh, the rallying cry for help is quite clear. This would be very helpful received, but if, um, if we could do that for merchants." Um, the second one is explore fee waivers, abatements or interest-free deferrals for town-owned internet and other utilities, or waiving any installation or reconnection fees for businesses dealing with the COVID-19 crisis. Um, and then she talks about every bill adds to the mountain of debt for struggling shops and restaurants. Town-owned assets seem like a good place to start. Um, and then includes some anecdotes here, uh, and it talks about how it would be a benefit. And then the third one would be, can, consider covering the costs to conduct a town-wide community event, which would be organized through the Umbrella Arts Center, to build, assemble, paint picnic tables for use in open spaces around town. Uh, this would create a highly visible demonstration of town spirit and coming together around a public-private partnership and help families engage with the town and create beautiful options for outside dining. In addition to uh, the cost of tables, we would need to consider additional costs for trash cans, um, trash pickup and sanitation supplies for tables. Um, and so I know that, um, Jerry Witch from the Umbrella and Jennifer are working on, uh, a proposal for it, you know, to bring to the town to backfill some of those details. So those are the recommendations and, and I'm happy to, to, you know, get the board you know, get the board's feedback. I have given them some thought as well, and I'll discuss that further or wait for questions.
Susan, and then Dren.
I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I watched the recording. And in the discussion about signage, Marcia was at the meeting and recommended for the HTC part that the business partnership, the vendors group, Concord Together, all write to the HTC about waiving those recommendations. But then, if there are other signage out of HTC, that was addressed in there. There was something else. Yeah, I think you covered it. It was utility abatement and incentives for the businesses to move to broadband.
Dren?
This is also in regard to signage, and I guess my question was, is that considered, is the request to change the sign protocols, is that a temporary? Are we talking about changing permanent signs?
Temporary.
Yeah, my understanding was just during the state of emergency.
So, I think, what is our approach here? I mean, should we be recommending that the HTC take this up? Is the Economic Vitality Committee going to go to them? What is the, I don't think it's our jurisdiction to be waiving these sign requirements.
So, one of the things we're working on is, and I've had a conversation with Marcia about this, and a few other ideas that we've discussed internally, about outdoor entertainment, for example, is, you know, something that I'm not sure if it's just disallowed in certain districts or other areas. And kind of come up with a package of changes that we could make temporarily to help stimulate businesses, including the signage. So, she is working on that. I mean, it's, you know, there are bylaws and policies and rules that have been in effect for a number of years for a number of reasons. And so, you're talking about kind of unwinding, even on a temporary basis, a lot of that. So, she's working on articulating that. I will tell you that on the utility question, it's not necessarily 100% within certainly my ability to do that, and I think there are some, I mean, I've been having this conversation with CMLP and CPW for electric and broadband and water sewer for at least two weeks, trying to find a way to do it, but it's complicated. It's almost like the tax issue where, you know, certain laws, certain laws have been relaxed during, by the governor's orders, but others, not every law has. And so, we're trying to figure out where is the, where are the spaces we can operate in that can provide some relief? And like I said, it's, we looked at it locally and didn't see much in the way of mechanisms that exist to do this, so we're trying to find a way to see if we can provide relief appropriately. I will say, you know, people who are struggling with bills, there's, under the governor's orders, utility companies are not allowed to do shut-offs, and you can enter into an interest-free payment plan as well. And I think the biggest thing is, as I've said, I think every week, if you have an issue that you need help with, just reach out and contact us, and we can try and help you individually in addition to doing the research we're doing for the other.
That would cover electricity, but it wouldn't probably be relevant to broadband.
Well, I mean, that's one of the things we're trying to figure out, is what's our ability on broadband.
Well, it seems, just as the signage one is an HTC responsibility, I think the fee waiver and the like, and the second recommendation is really something we need to rely on Town Manager to come back to us with what we can and what we can't do in a plan. And similarly, for the third one, I think Stephen and I can recall you and I having a conversation very early on in the pandemic about something to celebrate the reopening of the town. So, I think that we should think about that. It's a tough one. On the one hand, it's easy to think it would be a great idea, but we certainly don't want to encourage really large crowds again to get together and the like, and that's one of the issues associated with the Ag Day event that I spoke about earlier in the meeting. Perhaps we could get Jerry to come visit with us at an upcoming meeting to tell us what their ideas are.
Well, I think the thing that where it falls to this office is wherever it is, town facilities, like open spaces and parks, which of course separate from anything that would be the NRC's jurisdiction or the like, the library. The Library Board, Festis, has already, I believe, communicated that they would be willing to purchase tables and chairs to put out in front of their facility to create kind of outdoor seating places, obviously appropriately spaced. I think so. Town facilities, you know, I think it turns out we just own a lot of picnic tables, and so for us, it would be getting in them and deploying them, and I think providing the support.
They addressed that at the meeting. Beth said that as part of this shared services, shared spaces grant program, that that was a possibility, because what the discussion was not just an event. Jerry was there, and he said we could add a cultural piece to a public event, but it was a broader discussion about providing picnic tables at different parts of town where people who do get takeout can sit and eat, and further about having the picnic tables painted by certain, by a group or people. And Beth indicated that there may be some money in that grant that they could use for that. So, that was.
And I, the public, again, I think I say this every week, what we need the most is partnership, especially public-private partnerships on these things, and I think this would be another example, working with Concord Together and the Umbrella to kind of make this happen would be something that could be really kind of innovative.
Let's Kate is here too, I know, and I want to make sure we get the partnership involved in this, along with Community Chest. Maybe we could facilitate getting a representative from the Economic Vitality Committee, getting somebody from the partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, that usual, that kind of folks together on Zoom to kind of see where we are. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. And I think the only thing I just want to add is, on all of these suggestions, we've tried to take the approach, in fact, we've not tried, on every one of them, we've taken the approach of, let's find a way to make it happen, instead of let's try and find reasons why we can't. And there are times where in my reporting to the board and to the community, it comes across as trying to find reasons why we can't do it, but that's really a result of saying, how can we make this happen, and kind of running into some obstacles that aren't within our ability to just move out of the way. So, like I said, I think the ideas are very innovative, and I think you're right, Mike. I think a broader conversation to say, who needs to be at the table to get this done?
Why don't I just take the initiative and see if I can pull a bunch of folks together, and partnership, the Chamber, Concord Together, the Umbrella. I'll get a group together, and we'll get some brainstorming on this. I'll get back to you. And then, do we want to, as a board, do we want to have a position on the signage issue that we would want to convey or report to the HTC, or do we just, is the Vitality Committee, Susan, going to them?
No, they're asking for us to go to them, and what, for HTC, I thought the message was quite clear that the chamber, if the chamber, someone has to initiate this, and if the chamber, the business partnership, and Concord Together wrote to the, you know, to the HTC and asked for this, that I saw our role as supporting that, but not initiating that. And I don't know what the process is for signage in other, in non-HTC areas, and it is a temporary thing. And they did talk about, it didn't include, one of the members brought up how people are putting a lot of things on the sidewalk, and that this was only signage either on windows or banners or something, not boards and impeding on the public way.
Okay. Well, Susan, I guess I would suggest, and Carrie stands up, and so does Linda, so maybe I'll go to Linda first and then Carrie.
So, Mike, your idea about pulling the various people together is a great idea on the public spaces with the picnic tables and so forth, and I just hope you'll include Public Works or someone who's going to have to worry about the maintenance of all of this, ongoing maintenance and picking up the trash, et cetera.
Absolutely. Carrie?
I think all of these ideas are really great, and I think the Select Board should take a position to support whichever ones we feel comfortable supporting. I think I'm comfortable with all of them, and I wanted to throw out a couple more that were going to be in my liaison report. I was at the, by Zoom, Mass Selectman Board, Select Board Association meeting, and we heard from speakers in Arlington and Chatham, and they're doing a lot about signage, but they also have two other ideas that I thought we should really think about. One, they're designating curbside spaces where there's a lot of curbside pickup at restaurants. We should look into that. And also, everything's temporary, temporarily suspending the parking meters.
We've already suspended parking meters months ago.
They're, okay. I'm not sure if that's well-known out there.
No parking meters work, so people are putting money in them. They're wasting their money.
I haven't did. Okay, great. So, parking meters, that's awesome. Okay, so the other one was the curbside spaces, and I would support all of the ideas that we've heard today. I think they're excellent.
Mike, can I just, so I would say, I think it's, the way I read them, I think Items 1 and 3 should be easy. Item 2, with regard to the utility charges, that does need some more work. We need to do some homework on that. Anything on the curbside, sorry, and just on the curbside, we've, you've heard me say this many times, I just want to reiterate, because there's a lot of people, which is great, there's a lot of people at the meeting here tonight, we're reluctant to do that if someone isn't really asking for it, because we don't know what the impact of blocking space is in front of somebody's place is. And we've tried to look at blocking spaces or blocking streets holistically, and we still haven't gotten that kind of consolidated feedback. But we are 100% ready to do that when we have some requests that are kind of jointly submitted that make sense. I mean, we've been ready for a month to do that. It just is, I mean, who do we pick? And how, why do we pick them? And what's the impact on their neighbor? I mean, these are the issues that we keep talking about.
Dren?
I just wanted to throw out that in addition to HTC, it would seem like the Department of Public Health and our Board of Public Health need to be contacted, especially if, one of the things that we're considering moving forward on is picnic tables for people to do takeout and eat at in different public spaces. You know, there's a lot of licensing requirements of restaurants if they're going to put outdoor eating. So, we just, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not, you know, we're not creating a problem that has an easy solution upfront, but without looking at it.
Linda?
So, one last thing I wanted to mention is that just before the Economic Vitality Committee meeting, there was a MMA-sponsored meeting on economic vitality right now, and Secretary Canely was there from the state, and he talked about a whole number of grant programs that are either just out with July and August deadlines or some additional legislation that they're pushing right now that would help with infrastructure and some additional training, both for not, and training in other COVID-related costs, including possibly rents, that would benefit both businesses and nonprofits. So, there's some things that Marcia's going to be aware of that are already out there as grant opportunities with the July and August deadlines, but also there may be some legislative help on the way that could help with, number two, you know, the broadband issue, as well as website development and some other things for businesses and nonprofits.
Good. Thank you. So, I'm just going to try to summarize where we are on these three items. And Susan, I'm going to ask you for item number one, the way forward, I think, for us, I don't like the idea without something in front of us with a request of us going to another town committee and telling them what they should or shouldn't do. So, what I would suggest is that the groups representing the business community on this item, if they could prepare a letter and copy us on the letter to the HTC, then what we could do at a subsequent meeting is we could authorize the chair to write a supporting letter of opposition. I think that's the path forward. On the second one, I think the path forward is to turn to Stephen and ask him to do his homework and come back to us with some kind of a plan here of what we can and what we can't do. And on the third issue, I'll put together that group of people as quickly as I can to sort of brainstorm ideas and then be able to try to get report back to the board. Does that seem like a reasonable plan?
Yes, it does to me.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is a review of Town Meeting Select Board articles. I think you had sent in your packet the simple document that I had prepared, and this is related to the remarks I made at the beginning of the meeting. So, what we need to do is we need to go through these articles, and we need to try to determine whether they are essential and need to come to Town Meeting. And if they are essential, are they, are they the kind of articles that could be placed on, or we recommend anyway, to the Town Manager that they be placed on the consent calendar, or third, that they could be postponed or moved off to a special Town Meeting? So, the first.
Mike, sorry. Having, since you mentioned special Town Meeting, do we have any sense of if that's going to happen for sure in the fall or not, or?
We don't, we don't have any sense of it at all. I think it all just depends. I think when we, if we have a Town Meeting that's abbreviated, and there are articles that need to come before the Town, I think when the Town believes it's safe to have a special Town Meeting, we'll have it. I just don't know when it's going to be. We've temporarily got our postponed Town Meeting scheduled for September 12, and we don't even know if that's going to happen then. So, we just don't, we just don't know yet. So, the first article that we need to think about is the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. So, again, the options are, it's essential, and it needs to go before the voters at the postponed Town Meeting. The second is, it needs to be voted, but it could be put on the consent calendar because it's probably not very controversial. Or third, it's not essential and could be postponed. And I think the Town Moderator, I will stand corrected if she does so, is, might try to have articles on the consent calendar in the hope that they will remain there, but remembering that citizens can ask articles to be taken off. So, there may be articles that she proposes to be on there, but in fact, citizens want them taken off. So, anyway, Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. Thoughts? Susan?
I just want to refresh our memories. This is the bylaw that if we don't do anything, it's a three-year, it sunsets in the, in this state legislature. Is that correct, or am I thinking?
That's the, that's the Article 15, the Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption.
Okay.
This is the article that was associated with the articles at last year's Town Meeting to provide a half a million dollars for affordable housing, the transfer tax, and the building surcharge. And the first year, the money from free cash was at the, held at the direction of the Town Manager, and this trust article essentially would take all of the money that's allocated for free cash, for affordable housing, the transfer fee and the surcharge, and place it under the control of this housing trust. Terry?
Well, I'm leaning toward putting it on the consent calendar, and I have a question. So, I think I heard you say that. So I think I heard you say that moderator is maybe going to propose a list, but then some citizens might object and something would come off. So, it seems to me that they can object, I think, and take it off, you know, like a month before town meeting, or they can even do it at the town meeting. Is that right?
No, no. They can't do it before town meeting. There's nothing to do. It would essentially be, the moderator will lay out all of the articles on the consent calendar, and she will then go through each article one by one and ask there is objection. And I think, I'm not sure about this, but there's a certain number of people it takes to take it off the consent calendar, and I don't recall what that number is. And that too may be under the discretion of the town manager. But if, let's say it's 10 people, want something taken off, off it'll, off it'll come. So, a really good example of that would be the Community Preservation Committee's appropriations. She may put it on there. There may be objection, but there may be objection to just one appropriation, as opposed to the entire article. So that would still be able to save us some time.
Okay. So, I, the only reason I wouldn't want to put this on the consent calendar, and I have a number of them, like, in this category, if it had to come off the consent calendar and then we got in a long, you know, hour or two discussion, then I would have wanted that we put it off to another town meeting. But I really, I don't think it's going to be that controversial, and I think we could probably risk trying it on the consent calendar.
Linda? I see your hand.
Yeah, I'm also leaning in the direction of putting it on the consent calendar, particularly because we've already voted the trust in, and this is really just, in some ways, a formality.
Susan?
Yeah, I agree with the consent calendar, because we have, as Linda said, approved the components and-
Jane?
I agree.
And I agree as well. So that's, that's good. I will, that's what I will write down. The next is Article 14, Funds for Affordable Housing. This is a half a million dollar allocation for free cash. Thoughts? Don't all talk about?
I think it's important that we keep allocating these funds, because although one of the, one of the transfer, it's transfer tax or the surcharge on the building permits, one of them is, looks like it's, there are a whole bunch of towns that have jumped on that, and it looks like-
Transfer fee.
Yeah, state legislation. But I don't want to cut off that source of funding until those other two streams are in place. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure about consent calendar, but I wouldn't want to postpone it. I could be persuaded either to-
I think the only objection last year, well, it's not fair, but the primary objection last year, I think, was from some members of the Finance Committee. And my, my recollection of meeting that the Finance Committee had and talking about this, I don't know if they voted or not. Dean, I know you're here, but is it fair to say that the opposition to this free cash allocation no longer exists on the Finance Committee? I guess we won't know.
Trying to unmute. There I am. Am I unmuted? We brought this up in our regular round of conversations about whether to recommend affirmative action or no action on articles. And we deferred further conversation to a point where we are trying to consolidate our conversation around whatever the new budgetary realities are for the three major budgeting entities. So, we were unable to come to a decision on how to recommend acting on this affirmative. And we were not really considering your options of essential, non-essential consent. That was not something, we were just trying to, you know, do our normal business of, you know, affirmative or no action. And, and we deferred, we deferred the conversation. So we're not, we're inconclusive at the moment.
Well, I understand that. And, but, but my understanding is that the opposition to it last year is not the same concern that you have this year. This year, it's a budgetary concern based on-
I think we're, I think we're more amenable to it this year. Last year, we were, there was a lot of pushback regarding the use of free cash for what ought to be a budgeted item. And, and there were minor comments about that in our initial conversation this year, but I think we're, we're kind of sidling up to it, let's just say that. We're, we're a little bit better with it this year. But we're still not thrilled about dipping into free cash for individual project priorities.
I get it. I get it. All right. So here, I suggest then that what we do for the time being is we just put this on the consent calendar, because as you recall, what will happen is the chair and the vice-chair of the Finance Committee, Linda and I, and the moderator are going to churn this stuff, try to get it organized, and then we're all going to be, so we can leave it there, and then we'll find out what happens when we get to the bigger meetings. That seem reasonable?
That seems, that seems like a good idea to me. So I'm going to check out.
Susan? Okay. Linda? Terry?
Yep.
Jane? Okay. Next item, senior means tested property tax exemption. I think, I'll just tell you, I'm the liaison to this committee. This has to get moved, because if we don't get it to the legislature, the bill, the current law is going to expire, and we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. You'll recall that there's really no change to this, except a moderate, modest administrative change to assist the assessor in determining eligibility for it by using gross income, which is much easier for him to deal with. And the only other change is just removing the sunset clause from the bill that was already passed by town meeting twice and once at the polls. So I would be in favor of this, having the moderator put this on the consent calendar.
Yes.
I agree.
Any objection?
No.
All right. The next one is tax incentive financing. This is the Christopher Hyde Junction Village project. You'll recall, at the last meeting, I think it was, that they were awarded tax credits of $7.6 million, so that's really good. This is essential, that it come before town meeting, but this is, as we know, a controversial article. So having it on the consent calendar, I think, is totally inappropriate. But it, it can't be postponed, because if it's postponed, essentially, it kills the project. And if it's, project is going to get killed, it has to get killed by the voters.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I understand that there might be a motion presented on the floor of town meeting to amend the time of the, the length from 17 years to five years for the tax relief part of it. So, yeah, I agree. It should be right, it should be moved on the urgent or need to put on the calendar, because I think there will be a great deal of discussion about it.
And the word we're using is essential, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any objection to that? Okay, so, so we still have not, you know, we still have a responsibility that Dean alluded to, and that is after we've got this whole warrant sort of organized, we need to then go back through the various articles and take a position on them. So this is something that we and the Finance Committee will still have to do. Middle School Stabilization Fund, Article 29. I would say postpone it. We put the building committee project on hold. I would, when they get going again and it looks like it, do it. There's an argument that could be made. We know we're going to probably do this, we might as well get on with it, so.
Right.
Carrie?
Right, I think we should put it on the consent calendar, because maybe we should have even started the stabilization fund several years ago. So we don't know when we're going to build this middle school now, but we know we're going to build one someday, so my, I think we might as well ask the voters if they want it on the consent calendar, you know, that we have a stabilization.
Mike, did I hear your proposal be that we postpone it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know when we're going to hear from the town manager about, or from either Stephen or Carrie, about budget changes for FY '21?
I was actually just putting my hand up to talk about that, Linda. Excellent segue. So, the, the short answer is, we have not heard what the state's budget is going to be, and I think sometime, maybe in July, if we're lucky. So I think late July, early August, if we don't have any better information from the state, we will go with some assumptions that Carrie's been working on, and, you know, kind of make some projections then. I guess I, you know, you know, the middle school, I, I think that any use of free cash, quite honestly, falls into that category of something that will need to be looked at again prior to a floor vote for town meeting. So whether the board's decision is to consent calendar, postpone, or, you know, have floor debate on it is something that we aren't really going to know what we can really say or do about it until, for, probably for another month or so.
Susan?
If I recall correctly, and when we get past the committee and other people can, Finance, I'm particularly interested in their comments on this, because I recall Dean saying, when, we've done this before. We did it for Willard, we did it for the high school. And we actually had started the high school fund earlier than this in the, in the scheme of things. Now, this has changed. We don't know what that, that, the timing of that next step will be, but I'm a little reluctant to, to not have it, have some place in the, in the warrant, maybe on the consent calendar, but because it is going to happen in the, in the future. And this is a fund, this isn't a fund that we're spending on something unanticipated. This is going to relieve the tax, tax burden on, on the property owners when the project gets built. So, it's kind of a, you know, it's a savings account for future debt.
Okay, so you want it on, and you propose it to be on the consent calendar. Is that my understanding?
That's what I'm not sure about. I'd like to hear if any, are there any other thoughts on that? Because I'm not sure if that is one of those types of articles that would, as Terry talked about, in relationship to something else, would be pulled off and take a whole big chunk at time, whether it should just be on the essential list.
Well, but I don't think that's, if it's controversial, it's controversial, whether it's on the consent calendar or not on the consent calendar, so.
Okay, well.
So, Linda, Terry, Jane, what, Jane?
Mike, you're the liaison to the schools. Where are they on this?
I don't know. I'll find out. I think they're meeting tomorrow night. I'll try to ask.
So I sort of feel like we're, we're putting the cart before the horse, without getting their input on this?
All right, well, why don't I see if I can get their input? Why don't we write it down then, for now, as essential? So that just means that we'll want to deal with it somehow. And then when we get more information, we can decide whether we want to propose to the moderator or go on the consent calendar or not. Does that seem reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well.
Next is the Article 40, the fossil fuel infrastructure.
So, so has anyone seen the revision to this?
Which revision?
Revision that happened a while ago now?
Well, you know, I heard discussion that there was some revision to the, to this, but I haven't seen it.
Well, there was a revision a while ago.
Yeah, I remember that. All right, well, why don't I find out about the revision? I'm not supposed to, there is or there isn't. Is this a postponable article?
The reason I'm interested in the revision has to do with the implications for the cost burden on, you know, developers and construction people during this time. So I'd like to evaluate that, even though, in principle, we may support the, the general direction of what they're trying to accomplish.
All right. Well, again, this, our conversation is not about whether we support this.
Right.
But whether or not we think it's essential, that it needs to come before this abbreviated town meeting. So do you want me to find out about the revision and bring it back to us on Monday?
That would be good.
All right. That's fine. That's fine. Next one is Article 49, neonicotinoid prohibition on town land. I suggest that this can be postponed. Stephen, did you have a comment?
Just on the last one, I, I can't remember if the AG issued a determination on the Brookline one yet.
I haven't heard.
I, I, that's one of those things that's got lost in the shuffle of all of this. So maybe in addition, Mike, to that, or to the other data point, we can chase down and see if the AG has weighed in, and if the AG has said it's not, that it is preemptive, then maybe that can inform our, your, the board's thinking on whether or not it's essential or not.
That's a good point.
Okay, great. For that, Article 49, neonicotinoid prohibition on town land, I think this can be postponed. So did the committee.
Yep.
And the last one is the additional liquor licenses, which I would suggest can go on the consent calendar. I can't imagine there's opposition to that. Any, any concern about that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have Article 13, 14, and 15 recommending to the consent calendar. Article 16, and essential, that's the tax increment financing. Article 29, essential with more information from the school committee to determine whether or not we want to have it go to the consent calendar. Fossil fuel infrastructure, I'll find out if there's been a revision of it, and whether or not the Attorney General issued a ruling on the Brookline matter. Neonicotinoids, Article 49 can be postponed, and Article 50, additional liquor license can go to the consent calendar. All right, thank you all very much for doing that. The next item on our agenda is accommodation for citizen articles not moved at the postponed annual town meeting. As you know, we have a number of citizen articles this year, and if any of them are postponed for the special town meeting, what would be required? Would they would have to go back, resubmit their article again, and they would have to, if necessary, collect signatures? So, the proposal that I want us to consider is a motion that essentially would say that any of the citizen positions that are not moved for this postponed annual town meeting would become articles sponsored by the Select Board for the special, upcoming special town meeting now. Sponsored by the Select Board doesn't mean we approve them. It just means they become our articles, and people can speak to them in any way they want. The presenters could still make the presentations on their articles, but they would be relieved from having to go out and get signatures in support of the articles. Just saved them a lot of time, particularly if we're still in some kind of COVID-y thing.
Mike, so they, this would not have the effect of a no vote? This would be?
Well, it would have the effect of a no vote, but they can simply supply an article again. The only ones that can't be resubmitted again are zoning articles by the planning board, and that is a two-year window. But regular citizen, you can, you know, cats on leashes can come every year.
You, you mentioned a special town meeting. Would it be better to say the next?
Yeah.
Town meeting?
At the, yeah, the next town meeting, whether special or otherwise.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I have thoughts.
All right. Linda, do you think you could craft a motion to that?
Okay.
Uh, move that the um citizen art articles um originally presented for the twenty twenty annual town meeting be moved at the next scheduled annual town meeting af- after the twenty two, no.
It's uh if a citizen article is not moved.
Okay.
At the postponed annual town meeting, then.
Okay. Move that if a citizen article um originally scheduled for the twenty twenty annual town meeting is not moved at the twenty twenty annual mi- meeting, that it um be automatically placed on the next scheduled town meeting following.
Town meeting warrant.
Warrant. As a select board.
Okay.
As a select board article.
As a select board article.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because we, yeah. All right, is there a second for that?
Second.
Need discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Um, Ms. Ekman?
Hi.
Ms. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Hi.
Mr. Lawson?
Hi.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, I.
Good. And I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item then on the agenda is a review of the A G's decision regarding an open meeting law complaint filed by Ms. Bernislik. So it was included in your package. I want to read just a couple of parts of this, and this is from the A G's report. Um, the complaint alleges that one, a quorum of the board improperly deliberated by emails approximately thirty-one times between March twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, and May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, and two, the board improperly met an executive session on September twenty of two thousand sixteen, November twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, December twelfth, two thousand sixteen, March twenty seventh, two thousand seventeen, June ninth, two thousand seventeen, and October sixteen, two thousand seventeen. The letter from the A G is it's eight pages long, but I just read. Here here are the violations we find consist, this is about the thirty-one uh alleged uh open meeting law violations by email. The E G, the Attorney General found that seven of those uh email correspondence were in fact violations of the open meeting law, and she wrote, here are the violations we find consisted of brief passing remarks by different board members over the course of two years and do not demonstrate a pattern of email deliberations among a quorum outside of a posted meeting. Therefore, we also do not find that the board acted with deliberate ignorance of the law, and we decline to find this violation was intentional. With respect to the uh other part of the complaint, the complaint that alleges uh that we met improperly, the A G concludes, we find that the board properly met an executive session, and it was also reasonable to conclude that announcing the specific topics of litigation prior to convening an executive session would have compromised the purpose of the executive session and alerted the potential litigants. So the entire A G uh uh finding is on the select board website, along with the seven emails that the that the A G found were violations of the open meeting law. So anybody interested in this can please review those and draw their own conclusions. As a, as a matter, I would just say that um, you know, we just need to be extra careful about the way we communicate. As all of us know, since there's so much communication going on with uh Zoom and emails, it just sometimes you just forget, reply all, and and we just have to be much more diligent about that. So I hope that will serve as a reminder to all of us to to uh to be very careful of that. So anybody else has a comment or on on this particular matter? All right, the next item on the agenda is committee nominations.
Um nominate Beth Kelly of thirty-nine White Avenue to the White Pond Advisory Committee um for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Jennifer McGonigal of thirty-one Highland Street to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and Nancy Stone of seventy Beherel Street to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to begin on the first day of the month, following the twenty twenty annual town meeting to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. We will look forward to appointing those uh folks at our next meeting. Next is committee liaison reports. Who would like to go first? Susan? Go ahead, Susan.
Sorry, um, it it it's a brief report. I um watched the planning board meeting, and the first part of it was, uh, as you recall, last fall, there was a um an M A P C uh gathering of interested citizens about the Throw Depot area. So this was a follow-up to that. And they presented an idea, not a suggestion, not a um recommendation, but taking all of the feedback they got from the first session, they put together a possible idea for the Crosby Market area and emphasized that this is the kind of thing that if the property owner wanted to initiate something and do something to develop the property, that this is one option, but that it was totally up to, anything that happened was totally up to the owners of the parcels. But it was a very interesting proposal. It had um good pedestrian walkway up Sudbury Road on that side, which is a little dicey right now. And it was combination use with housing over the existing footprint of the grocery and hardware store, with a couple other options for um housing. And and one of the main ideas was that it's right near the train station. So the the thought was that it would possibly be young couples who take the train or um older people who are downsized and want to be able to walk to the grocery store and to all the other into town. So it that was a very interesting presentation, and they're taking feedback for two weeks. Um. And if you go on the planning board site, you can find the information of how how you can see the presentation and and then um find out how to provide feedback. But there was more positive, I thought, than than not feedback from the attendees. Uh, the other thing they talked about was um they did recommend approval. They they reviewed the draft letter from the last meeting on the now Communities LLC, which is the fourteen-unit um P R D that's right next to Water.
Carver Walk.
Thank you.
River Walk.
I can't remember that name. River Walk. So they they finalized and voted to recommend approval to um the Z D A. And that's it. And I was at the uh or watched the Economic Vitality Committee, but we've already covered that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, Jane?
Um, I will uh segue off of our new uh nomination for White Pond Advisory Committee with a report on the recent meeting, which I want to commend um because there was between twenty-six and twenty-eight participants. So this was a very, very robust and lively meeting. Um, not surprisingly, it it came um right after uh we opened White Pond. And in the intervening months between during the heat wave and and as as Corona has been wending its way through, the pond has seen a lot of activity. Um, and I'll just say on behalf of the town, I think it's it's fair to say we haven't caught up with uh our management. Um, because again, we just, we just opened the beach and we're just moving in. But there was a great deal of concern echoed um around uh trash being left uh throughout throughout the areas of the pond, but specifically with um respect to Sachem's Cove. Delia was, uh, Delia was there on behalf of the N R C and took a lot of comments um from the group. Uh, so there's trash issues. Parking has um uh according to the neighborhood, become a real problem. And they were very interested in seeing temporary parking signs go up, um temporary no parking signs go up. Um, the concern uh concerns about now accessing the pond from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail uh and and bikes potentially sort of going off and going down either into the woods um or um or actually cutting new trails. Um, and then the folks on the bikes using the pond. Um, and then there was also concern about uh sort of the attention in general from the town, given the fact that the town between the the beach and the municipal side, uh, not just the Cove, which is the N R C's piece, but because the town now owns a significant portion of the of the pond, that um there was a uh to put it, a strong encouragement might be mild, that we revisit um the report that Jerry Frankel that uh produced um and think about our responsibilities as uh as a uh large landholder on the pond. Um, you know, there was acknowledgement that the efforts on behalf of the N R C to do erosion control, again, backup in that area behind um the Cove had been very effective, but that um eager usage was sort of um overwhelming. So I think that we have some uh challenges ahead uh to uh assist the neighborhood in the enthusiasm for um for local water and access to it.
Okay, um, Linda?
Um, I also attended the public, um, the Planning Board Committee, and in addition to everything Susan mentioned already, I just want to note that they also um, as they typically do this time of year, attempted to begin an initial, they did begin an initial conversation on their uh goals for the year, and what a challenge that was, given we haven't had town meeting yet and all these other demands that are on us. I have already mentioned, I listened to the M M A uh webinar on economic um development vitality. That was very interesting. I attended the Economic Vitality Committee and FinCom.
Right.
I won't comment on the con- contests because they've kind of come up in other conversations.
Terry?
Okay, I have a very brief report also. As I said, I attended the Mass Select Board Association um webinar. And one of the things that did come out was, as Linda said, there's a number of grants that quite a long list. So rather than taking the time now, um probably Stephen, you know all of them or ninety percent of them, but I'll send you the list anyway, just in case, so we can make sure we get every dime from the state that we can um for our businesses and and economic vitality. And then the library committee met, and as somebody mentioned, they are going to be putting out eight cafe tables and chairs on the lawn in the front with access to Wi-Fi. They had two hundred students sign up for the summer learning program, which is really huge. Dr. Hunter has been involved in working with the library on that. The staff is really busy setting up and disinfecting the libraries, both, both of them in preparation for reopening, which might occur in the next couple of months. And they're looking for a new member next year, particularly interested in a person of color. If anybody um out there knows of anybody, throw out the green card. It'd be great. That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, I attended the change of command ceremony, saying goodbye to Colonel Ellsworth as he departs, and welcoming Colonel Stevens. Uh, attended the Tax Fairness Committee. Um, uh, they're very concerned about uh, you know, the postponed town meeting and because of the potential for the bill to lapse. And um, once this gets out of the way, they're going to be uh trying to decide if they have another agenda that they want to try to tackle. I attended a Finance Committee meeting and uh as they um, they were very busy meeting again. Uh, as as mentioned earlier, they reviewed some of these same matters that we reviewed uh tonight with respect to interview transfers. Uh, they elected a new chair, Mary Hartman. I don't know if Mary's here, but congratulations to her. Uh, I attended the municipal light plant meeting. Uh, two big agenda items. One was a cost of service rate design, a lot of discussion about that. And the second was renewable energy credits. So uh, very lively, very lively and interesting meeting of the light plant. So that's all I have. We had miscellaneous correspondence. We had a number of pieces of correspondence about capital spending and in general, and some about the Jero property. Uh, we had a complaint about uh uh posting on the town website that uh had to do with police seeking information. Uh, we had an email about brush blocking uh an entrance to the Estamar Trail Monument Farm. Um, so that's all I have and recall. And I think what we will try to continue to do, though, just in the public interest, is that as these emails come into us, we forward them to Jeremy, and he can just post them along with agendas so that uh the public has a chance to see the kind of uh the kind of emails we continue to get. And I think Matt Johnson, who, when we talked this last week, suggested that, and I think that's a good idea. So, uh, yes, Stephen?
I, Jane's report to remind me of something um that I neglected to mention in my town manager update, but it's a fun thing, so I want to make sure we get the word out. Uh, there was a long planned public art installation on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail um that has now been entitled Get Outside. And so you'll be, and I think it runs from July first into November, and you'll be seeing some signage promoting that um that that program, that that installation um throughout town. Um, it I will say that when it was brought back, when it was brought to my attention for it, I did ask the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee to take another look at, to see if they had any concerns about social distancing, and and I think they talked that through, and they have, they they think they, I think there there is um a plan in place to help manage that as as best as can be expected. But I forgot to mention that, and it starts in a few days, so I just want to let the, let y'all know.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, public comments. Are there any public comments? You're just unmute yourself. I can probably see you.
Hello, yep. I don't have my image. Um, Tanya Galis, thank you. Um, eh.
You're going to introduce yourself and tell us where you live, please?
Yes, Tanya Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road.
Yeah.
Um, eh, about the articles that you decided to postpone, such as the neonicotinoids, um, I I am disappointed about that decision. And my question is, eh, if um those, the articles that are to be postponed are going to be moved as an amendment, I believe, correct, at the meeting?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Eh, how how are the articles, eh, okay, my question is, if at the meeting, a few people request to move this article on the neonicotinoids, eh, can they do so?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question. My other.
But hold it. Uh, I don't know how many people, it's not one person removing an article.
Correct.
Requires a number. I don't know what that number is, but I think the number is ten.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to check on that. My my other um eh question is just to be clear, uh, because there was a little mix-up when when you made the decision to sponsor postponed citizen articles, eh, that that the wording said the next town meeting, not the next annual town meeting. Uh, I just wanted to make sure, I, there was some confusion as I was listening?
I think there, I don't think there was confusion. I think the the next time the town has a town meeting, whether it's an annual town meeting or a special town meeting, those articles would be sponsored by the select board.
Okay, thank you. It may have been on my technical end. Thank you.
No problem. Terry?
Mike, um, yeah, I'm just a little confused about um Ms. Galis's first question. Um, there are two separate. There are two separate things, as I understand it, one's the consent calendar, and if it's on the consent calendar, in order to remove it from the consent calendar, Mike, I think that's when you were talking about it needs 10 votes.
If 10's the right number.
Right, I thought it was seven, but something like that, but I think Ms. Galis's question is not about the consent calendar, if I understand it right, it's about articles that are not going to be on the warrant at all, is that your question?
There will be a, there will be a motion made to postpone indefinitely a set of articles.
Okay.
And just as with the consent calendar, if there is objection to that, they will be taken off, the motion will be amended, essentially, to strike Article 12, or whatever it is, and again, there'll be a certain number of people that will be required to do that.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's all under the control of the town moderator. Are there additional comments? Diane, I see your hand up. You're muted, though.
Thank you, Michael. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I wonder when you plan, or if you plan, to make sure that everybody in town receives an updated version of the warrant, in the sense that, and ordering, so people know what's on the consent calendar, or at least plan to be on the consent calendar, what articles are going to be taken up, et cetera, and then a clarity about the protocol to deal with each of those, and I think that that kind of detail, which is not necessarily, in the past, accompanied a town mailing, would be particularly hopeful this time, but that's just my perspective, given the confusion that ensues, and I wonder what the?
You're absolutely right, we're still working through all of this, but the current thinking is that all articles will have a presentation that will be made and posted on the town website, there will not be presentations made at town meeting, but the current thinking of the moderator is that there would be a publication produced by the town, which would be distributed at town meeting, which would have all the articles listed and a summary of them, and way before that, we will develop a set of protocols, she's already begun, moderator's already been working on a set of protocols for how town meeting is going to happen, what the motion about postponing means, so you're right, there's a lot of work to be done, just to make sure we're as clear as we possibly can be to everybody, so that folks know what's going on, so stay tuned.
Thank you, and if we can help in any way, please let citizens know, to be able to take a look at it and see, we understand what's going on.
At least, I think your hand was up, yes.
My hand's up, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Getting used to Zoom here, sorry. I have two items I want to mention, the first one is I want to voice my serious concern about the third year running of the overrun of the legal bills, and $291,000 this year is a lot of money, and I understand, you know, how the board has been able to pay that, but that's a lot of unplanned expenses on the citizens' part, and I know we did agree to $100,000 at the special town meeting for some legal bills, so that's about the only input we've had on that, that three years of free cash transfers. I would think that the town council could do a little bit better job on estimating expenses going forward, I'd like to see that, because I personally think, now that we're at over the million dollar mark, I really am feeling that maybe we could have spent that money better, you know, on roads, or low-income housing, or our senior citizens, or something, like that's just a lot of money, particularly because 99% of Estherbrook, the private Estherbrook Roads, or Exeter Brook Woods are still open, it's just the several hundred yards of private residential area that's being disputed, I understand it, so I just don't understand it. So the second thing I wanted to mention is, I got a wrong, I perhaps got the wrong impression of the town councils explaining of the overrun, he was talking about the open meeting violations, it was like a statement that was sent out to the town, it came out in the Concord Journal last week, and I felt it was misleading, because it made it sound like just the defendants, that one particular lawyer was responsible for filing the complaints, and I just want you to know that I was, as a point of fact, I also contacted the Attorney General's office asking about open meeting violations, so I'm going to come forward, if you didn't know that, I'm telling you that, I was actually advised by the town clerk to do so, I had asked for a couple of information, I was told it was privileged, and if I wanted to know, I had to go to the state to get information, so it's my understanding, or I know of 60, six-oh, other citizens that also have contacted the Attorney General with questions about, you know, the open meeting, so I felt like it was just, I felt that the statement was pinpointed on just that one lawyer, and I just didn't think that was a real accurate reflection, knowing me personally, that there were 60 of us that had contacted them, so I just wanted you to know, I don't know whether you knew that there was this big group of people that have actually asked about some things, so that's just, I wanted you to know that there were more than just that lawyer that had been involved in trying to figure out what's going on.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Just correct a little bit, the latest transfer that you talked about for legal expenses was not done for free cash, that was done with a general budget transfer within the town, so.
So how does that differ? I guess I don't understand, I'm sorry.
Well, it's like, the town, I don't want to go into too much detail, the town has budget items for certain things, pencils, pens, whatever it is, within a certain number of days of the closing of the budget, if there's a shortfall of pens and a surplus in pencils, you can transfer money from one account to another, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any additional citizen comments? I don't see anybody else.
I'm done, thank you.
Muting, thank you. All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, it passes unanimously, thank you all very much for attending, good night.
Thank you.